Good morning. I call this meeting to order. Welcome to the 28th of January 2020. I'm still having trouble with 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Please stand for a minute of silence and reflection. Thank you, please be seated. At the beginning of every regular Planning Commission meeting, we allow time for a comment period where anyone can speak for up to three minutes on any topic that does not appear on the agenda. The comment period will last up to 10 minutes, and that's regardless of the number of speakers. So does anyone have anything they want to come up and speak about that's not on the agenda? All right, please come forward. You have three minutes.
Good morning. Is it on?
Yes, please say your name and address.
Hi, my name is Teresa Labiche. I live at 5889 North Hills Drive. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity last week to talk and share my concerns. I'm a little out of breath because I ran from the parking lot. I know that capturing the true essence and the depth of a fast-paced meeting is difficult through the written word. I want to formally request that the video link of the Planning Commission meeting is always included in both the draft and approved written minute PDFs for the meeting posted on the Planning Commission website. Additionally, the video link should be provided below the written minutes on the Planning Commission website. These minor changes provide greater transparency and provide the public with the depth of discussion occurring regarding the rezoning request and any amendments to the city's 2030 comprehensive plan and the city's unified development ordinance. I am out of breath. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to reiterate, I want to make sure I got it. You'd like to see the video link appear at the bottom of the minutes.
I would like, if you could embed the video link within the written draft and also the approved, I think it would help people understand what really is happening because I think the concern is, is that, like, I read what I said, and I'm like, you're kidding me.
Okay.
You know?
All right, so.
And I think that'll be helpful.
Thank you.
I think for people that have trouble comprehending the reading and their auditory, it would be helpful to really understand what happened through the video thing. I know it's lengthy, but when somebody's really concerned about something, I think to hear the discussion and the energy and the emotion behind it, they can feel like their voice was heard.
Thank you. All right, so can we put that on the retreat set of topics? So we will take that up at our retreat and talk about how to better handle that. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to come up and speak about anything that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. I want to discuss here at the beginning, changes to the agenda because we have a number of cases that have been deferred for one reason or another. Is there anybody here for Z-5019? Okay, Z-5019 has not been heard at the West CAC. We typically don't hear cases until the CAC has heard the case, so if you can hold your comments until after the CAC meeting, we'd most appreciate it. But if you feel like you need to come up and say something about it now, we will hear you. So can you wait, or do you? Okay, all right. So is there anybody else here for Z-50? All right, we're going to defer that one until after the West CAC. Does anyone know when that meeting is to take place?
Yeah, I believe that they'll have two meetings. One will happen in February and one in March, around the third week of each month. So February 18th and March 17th.
So we probably want to defer this to the second.
Second March meeting, yes ma'am.
All right, so the second March meeting, thank you. CP-1119, the Morgan Street Extension, the applicant has asked to defer that case to the 11th of February because it'll be discussed at the CAC tonight. So is there anybody here that came to speak about CP-1119? All right, that case is now deferred to February 11th. CP-619, Blue Run Lane, has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we will not hear that case today. Z-3919, North Rogers Lane, is there anyone who came here to speak about that today? All right, so the applicant has asked to defer that to the 11th of February meeting. Can you hold your comments until then?
Yes.
Okay, so we're deferring that case to the 11th of February, so we're done with that case today. Z-4119, is there anyone who came to speak about that? That's Millbrook and North Hills. So that case will be deferred also at the request of the applicant till 11th of February, so we don't intend to hear anything about that today unless you feel like you need to say it today. All right, so, yes ma'am.
I just wanted to say people at Shores Lake Park, they haven't heard about.
So the notice has gone out to, you know, everybody within 500 feet of the zoning case, and the CAC has been discussing the case, so I think you'll need to check with staff. Who's the staff representative for this? Matt, can you talk with this lady about how to help the neighborhood?
Absolutely.
Get involved? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we're going to defer that case to the 11th of February. Z-3119, 5228 Needham Road, is there anyone here to speak about that? Okay, that case has been deemed inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, which means that we're going to be sending that to the committee of the whole in the second, at the end of February. So what was the date on that?
February 27.
February 27th at 4:00 PM. That's a Thursday afternoon, late afternoon, and there'll be lots of opportunity for folks to speak on that case there, so if you can hold your comments for that meeting, that would be most appreciated. Is there anybody else who's here about Z-3119? Okay, moving on to the committee report. So we have a report from the Strategic Planning Committee.
We do. We had a kind of orientation meeting last week, I think, to talk about what our agenda would be for the year, and there was consensus in the committee that we should focus on affordable housing policies. And so at our meeting in February, staff is going to give us a briefing on what our current approach is to affordable housing in the comp plan and in rezoning cases. We also discussed two topics that came up at the last Planning Commission meeting. One was the future of the Depot District Small Area Plan, given all the rezoning approvals that have gone on in that district. And we asked staff, actually staff volunteered, to get us some guidance from the Historic Districts Development Commission. They had a strong objection to the last rezoning that came through Planning Commission, and so we think want to know what they'd like us to do going forward. Won't necessarily be bound by that, but at least we should know what they think we ought to do. And the third topic was construction impacts, major projects adjacent to small businesses. And again, staff is going to get us a memo from Development Services about what the current policies are with respect to that issue, which is an important issue, so we'll be hoping to receive that in the next month or two. And that is what we did at Strategic Planning.
Thank you, Commissioner Gary. So you said you're going to be focusing on the affordable housing policies in a February meeting?
Yes.
Can you?
And after that, probably.
Can you share that date and time for people who might want to come out to that meeting because it is open to the public?
It is the second Tuesday of the month at 9:00 AM, so I don't have that date in front of me, but February 13 at 9:00 AM, and we meet in room 305.
So if anybody's interested in that, please come out.
It's actually the third Thursday?
Third Thursday.
So it'd be on the 20th.
Meeting, oh, I'm confusing it with something else. All right. Correction, the Strategic Planning Committee meets on the third Thursday of the month, which is February 20th at 9:00 AM. Thank you.
All right, moving on to old business. Before we start on that, I want to remind everybody on the procedure for input on agenda items because we have cases that fall into two categories. During the review of items on the agenda, the applicant and proponents will have an opportunity to speak for a total of 10 minutes, and the opponents have an opportunity to speak for 10 minutes, at two minutes each speaker. We ask that speakers not duplicate comments, and after all the comments, the applicant will have two additional minutes to respond to issues or questions raised. However, if we've already heard from the applicant and we've taken public comment, we will have to vote to hear more public comment, so that will require a three-fourths vote from the members present. So we will have cases in both situations, so just be prepared for those conversations. So moving on to Z-3219, Sunny Brook Road.
So this, you have not heard this request before? It was before you recently and deferred to allow for the ECAC to vote. That occurred last night. Your deadline for action is February 11th. So Z-3219 is a request to rezone three and a quarter acres from R6 to OX3 with parking limited frontage and zoning conditions. This shows the zoning in the area. Most surrounding properties to the east of Sunny Brook Road are office mixed use. That is what the request is for as well. This shows the aerial view of the area. The site is undeveloped. There was a house on one of the parcels. It's been removed, so it's undeveloped and wooded. Just to the north, off the screen here, is Wake Med, and south is the Sunny Brook Road intersection with Pool Road. And you can see there are a number of offices in the area, medical office associated with the hospital and other low-density and moderate-density residential developments. This is a view of the site from Sunny Brook Road. There is one zoning condition that prohibits some high-intensity uses. This shows the difference in entitlement. So the property is going from residential six, which will be a limit of six units per acre, up to 18 units on the site, to a three-story development with no limit to unit or intensity. Of course, that would be governed just by the physical constraints of the site, so we think about 27 units per acre or 91 units. This shows the changes in non-residential entitlement. The request is inconsistent with the future land use map. The area is designated as office, research, and development, which specifically recommends no residential uses. The OX district permits residential uses, so that inconsistency, if this case would be approved, would amend the future land use map to reflect office and residential mixed use on the site. The site is located in a city growth center and along an urban thoroughfare, so that would recommend a urban or hybrid frontage, which is included, so the request is consistent with that guidance. The walk score is in line with the city average. The transit score is above the city average, and the building types permitted in the OX district are also smaller and more efficient than what is permitted currently with the detached housing type. Looking at bus service in the area, the site is currently served by the Route 19, which offers 15-minute peak hour service from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week, or excuse me, five days a week, and every other time it offers 30-minute service, and it connects essentially Wake Med to downtown. Up here, it does a loop and then goes back down Pool into downtown. Future bus service, that's planned to be maintained, serving this site at the existing The request does dramatically increase housing supply in the area. There are no subsidized units proposed in the request. Of course, the townhouse duplex and apartment building types will be permitted under the requested zoning. They are not permitted under the existing zoning, so that increases the variety of housing permitted on the site. Of course, those uses also come with smaller lot sizes, smaller than the city average and smaller than the existing zoning, and is served with 15-minute frequent transit today. The comprehensive plan analysis, again, is inconsistent with the future land use map and consistent with the urban form map, and it is consistent overall with the policies of the plan. Look at those policies for you, consistent with these, inconsistent with the future land use map. And if approved, this is the amendment that will be made to the future land use map, carving out office and residential mixed use in the office and research and development area. There are no outstanding issues. The CAC vote last night was seven in favor and two opposed, and again, your deadline is February 11th, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Clem, do you know what the two that voted against were concerned about?
No.
Okay.
It was like a balloted.
Okay.
Vote, and there was no discussion after the votes were cast, so I'm not sure.
Any other questions for staff before we hear from the applicant?
The future land use map designation, this is really on the, I mean, it's an office area, but this location is on the edge of that, and south of it is residential, is it not?
Hold on one second, right here. Yeah, so the existing condition today on the future land use map shows this area as office and research and development, which permits or would recommend potentially incompatible uses with residential use.
Yeah.
And to the south of that area, there is an area dedicated for some open space and then moderate-density residential, which would recommend up to 14 dwelling units per acre.
Right, and that's blue strip curving around the site to the south is CASA Housing, I believe you said, and.
Yep, that is correct.
VA facility.
There's a VA facility here, and this is, or I'm sorry, I think it's the other way around. I think this is CASA, no, this is CASA and this is the VA.
Right. So this isn't housing stranded in the middle of an office park. This is, it won't necessarily be housing anyway, right? It could be office.
That's right. Housing is permitted, office is permitted. We have an idea of what the maximum intensity of those uses could be. Of course, any development that complies with what the codes standards are for those zoning districts is permitted.
Right. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Let's bring up the applicant.
Good morning, Chairwoman, members of the commission. My name is Worth Mills, here on behalf of the applicant. As Matt stated, this is a rezoning from R6 to OX3 PLCU with the condition being to prohibit the detention center, jail, and prison uses. This rezoning is being requested in order to facilitate a, excuse me, a two-story medical office building, which could offer some complementary limited retail options as well. And while the request is inconsistent with the future land use map, and I'll note that's the only comprehensive plan policy that we were deemed to be inconsistent with, given the moderate-density residential designations to the south, we felt that rezoning to OX provides kind of that textbook land use buffer, land use transition that the comprehensive plan typically calls for. Related, all of these other parcels here that you see, which are deemed office and research development to the north and to the east of us, those are also zoned OX, three stories, five stories, whatever it may be. So, you know, while we're inconsistent with the future land use map, we are compatible with the surrounding area and the surrounding land uses. We're consistent with the urban form map, with this being a city growth center, which calls for significant redevelopment or infill development. We feel that this is putting the land to its highest and best use and will be, continue to be served and potentially further served by the BRT system forthcoming. As Matt said, we had a positive CAC vote last night. We didn't really have many complaints from the attendees, so I don't have much to offer as far as the reasons for opposition, but overall, it was generally positive, not only at last night's meeting, but at the November meeting as well. So just to conclude, the request is consistent overall with the comprehensive plan. It's compatible with the surrounding uses and zoning districts. We feel that the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it creates an OX-zoned area to facilitate those medical and office uses that you see around Wake Med Hospital, and it creates that appropriate land use transition from the moderate-density residential to the more intense land uses near the hospital. So with that, I'll conclude and answer any questions that you all have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Does anyone have questions for the applicant?
Well, just to clarify, the zoning would allow residential. You're saying it won't be residential, but wouldn't have any objection if it were residential, so.
The applicant isn't planning any residential units here, but I think from a land use transition, it fits well as an OX, and it preserves that ability down the road if something were to change, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, so we have time for anybody here who wants to speak in support of this case. So is anyone here to speak in support of the case? All right, seeing none, is anyone here to speak in opposition to this case? All right, seeing none, let's bring it back to the table. Does anyone want to share their thoughts or make a motion?
Well, I do think this is close to a BRT, future BRT route. It's on a significant bus route now, so the intensity, it's going to add, it potentially adds some car traffic, but hopefully over time, transit serves this site, and the car traffic is at least somewhere close to downtown and other destinations, so I think it's an appropriate zoning for the site.
I agree with you.
I agree as well. I think it fits within the context of what's going on there.
All right, so it seems like we have consensus. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
So I will move that we recommend approval of Z-3219 and recommend the associated change in the future land use map from office residential, office research and development to office residential mixed use. So move.
And the public.
And because it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, will be made consistent with the future land use map, and is in the public interest.
Second. Any further conversation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, moving on to Z-3619, Pool Road.
All right, this case was before you at your last meeting. There were no outstanding issues or follow-up questions for staff. Just to remind you, the request is for about 17 and a quarter acres to be rezoned from CX3 to CX4 with the addition of a parking limited frontage. The southeast CAC voted three in favor and 15 opposed to the request, and your deadline for action is February 11th. I'm happy to answer any questions. It was stated at the last meeting that the Planning Commission felt they needed more time to consider the request, and so staff is here.
So just to remind folks why the negative vote at the CAC was to do with the fact that there could be no retail on the site due to the Walmart private agreement for the land sale?
Yeah, that's my understanding, right? There's a private agreement between the buyer and the seller that restricts how the property can be used in the future in the city. can be used in the future, and the city is not in a position to have any impact on those private agreements.
We have no standing there?
Correct.
All right, we have heard from the public about this case. Do you feel like you need more input from the public if there's anyone here to speak, or are you ready to move on this case?
I just want clarity, because I wasn't at the last meeting, and I tried to watch. This is also the one that had some issues, questions?
Please use your microphone.
Is this also the one that issues or questions about the impact of traffic in this area?
I think there was some conversation about the impact of traffic.
Okay.
And I don't recall what the statistics were, so if we want to bring up, Jason, to remind us, Jason Myers is here, to remind us about the traffic situation at this site.
What's the question exactly? I remember talking-
Trip generation for the change in?
Do you have that? There's some numbers in the staff report. It did not require a TIA because it didn't reach those thresholds. I remember at the last Planning Commission meeting, or at least the last one this was heard at, I had detailed some of the projects that are, that the city and the state are working on in the area, but I don't know that I have anything more specific to add to that other than the fact that it didn't reach a trip generation threshold. Matt's going to pull up the numbers here. I had it on my computer and I left it over there.
But as I recall, the trip generation would be in line with anything that went on the site.
There we are, okay. So the, it's a relatively small increase of daily and peak hour traffic based on the entitlement change from the current zoning to the proposed zoning. That, of course, is different than going from a vacant site to a developed site, but the rezoning is a very, very small marginal increase of about 14 to 15 or 16 trips in the peak hour times.
Great.
And the threshold is 150 in a peak hour, so it's a tenth of what would meet the threshold.
Thank you for that information.
Yeah, just to summarize, of course, there will be an increase from the vacant site to any development, but the report and the numbers that we consider are what could be built today under the CX3 zoning, and what is the difference between that and the CX4 zoning that is proposed, and that's the calculation.
The 14 trips approximately.
Thank you.
Okay. I just had a comment. I think at the last meeting, folks came and spoke about the project and the vote, you know, 15 to three, I think it was against. I think it was a way to show that they felt like the process of how residential got there was unfair, whatever. And I just wanted, I don't know if anybody's here from the public today, but if there's some guidance that we could give the citizens, if they're interested in having a small area plan or some sort of study done of that area to help with some of the traffic concerns that they have, what can we, maybe it's a staff question, what can we do to help them?
So certainly, we can have that conversation about more focused planning efforts in the city. We want to be mindful about our existing work program, which has been blessed by our city council. So as we start to think about new efforts, we can have the conversation here or in one of your subcommittees, and then make that part of our recommendation as we start moving into the next fiscal year about work program items.
Thank you. So I believe we talked about maybe sending this conversation to the strategic planning about small area plan. Did we not mention that last time? Okay. It may have been another case where we were talking about-
No, it was this one, and we did not get to that topic the other day.
Okay, so it is on your radar, but not yet been discussed.
On my radar. I wonder if the question is traffic impacts of this case specifically and of cases in general in southeast Raleigh, whether this might more appropriately go to the Transportation Committee?
We could do that. I mean, but-
Transportation Committee is in need of an agenda, actually.
All right, well, that would be a good one. So shall we transfer this to the Transportation Committee, which is also something you chair?
Yep.
All right.
If you would.
Thank you.
We need to establish a meeting time for the Transportation Committee because it now can, our current meeting time conflicts with the council's new Transportation and Transit Committee meeting time, so the members of the Transportation Committee will have to put our heads together and figure out when we can meet, and it may be that an evening meeting time, early evening would be best, but I haven't discussed it with others.
All right, so we'll take that up.
I just want to note that we have a deadline on the 11th of February for this. Anything that we do, we've got to try to get it done expediently.
Right. So is there any more discussion about this case and the facts of this case right now? Are we ready to make a motion?
I'm not ready to make a motion. I would listen to a motion and vote on it, but I, my inclination is to say that this really should be an N, a neighborhood mixed use zoning category, not a CX category. And I say that because CX, this is for CX3 to CX4, but the next move could be CX12. NX has a little bit more built-in constraints about the scale and intensity of uses. I think it's much more appropriate for this site, and over time, it will generate a lot less traffic.
Would the applicant like to respond to that?
Actually, before the applicant does, maybe I can interject some information about our code.
Okay.
So the NX zoning district is capped at a maximum size of 10 acres, and the intention behind that zoning district was to allow for more neighborhood-focused or smaller footprint that serves a smaller trade area. And so I believe this parcel is in excess of 10 acres. That's right.
At this point, I am, I'm going to go ahead, since everyone's pretty quiet. I support moving this case forward. It will put more residential in the area. The trip generation is going to go up because, you know, the site is going to be developed at some point. So I think, given the constraints that the private agreement puts on it for eliminating retail from the site, we have no standing to deal with that, and it's the way I understand that. Is that correct?
Yeah, the city doesn't, isn't a party to any private covenants, wouldn't be enforcing them.
So I think this seems like a good use of the land itself to get more residential that we need in the city, so I support this case. Second? I haven't made a motion, I just, I'm just saying I support it, so I'm looking for a motion, so if you'd like to make the motion, we would love that, so please.
All right, you're going to help me, help walk me through this. I move approval of Z 3619 because it adds a needed housing to the city stock. It is, I'm looking for consistency here, consistent with the comprehensive plan.
And is in the public interest.
And is in the public interest, thank you.
And I think you might want to mention about the future land use map amendment as well.
Oh, and also that support the change to the change in the future land use map to CX3, four, sorry.
The change in the future land use map, I think, is community mixed use, from neighborhood mixed use to community.
From neighborhood mixed use to community mixed use, thank you.
Okay, we've got it, thank you. Do we have a second? Second. Any further conversation? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
There were three noes?
Four.
Four noes? Okay, so can you raise your hand if you are a no? So it's, we are in a deadlock, right? So it's four to four?
So this happened recently, actually, a couple, and what you guys did then was then to make a motion in the, to deny, and also state your reasons on the record for the denial, and voted on that as well, and then both motions and the reasons were sent to council as your recommendation.
Right, and we went without a recommendation because it was four to four, as I recall, so.
Right, that was your, you know, there was more detail about what your motion stated.
Okay, all right, so do we have somebody ready to make a recommendation, or, sorry, a motion to deny, recommend denial?
So we need to do that. I will, I will move that we deny, recommend denial of Z 3619 because it conflicts with the future land use map designation of neighborhood mixed use intensity.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of this motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
No, so it's still four to four, right? Okay, so we'll send this forward to the city council with no recommendation and the vote that it is a split vote.
That's what you guys did last time.
Yep, all right, thank you. Moving on to case Z 4419. And we have not heard this case before. Sorry, so we're moving on to Z 4419.
Thank you, everybody. We're having trouble.
Okay, sorry about that. We tried, but, you know, it's easy to get caught up in what you're trying to accomplish.
It might be helpful to remind all the commissioners that we did receive an email requesting that we all speak into the microphone, that it's really hard to hear. We can hear up here, but it's hard to hear up there. If you can't hear us, let us know, please, thank you.
All right.
So, good morning. This was on your agenda two weeks ago. It was deferred for lack of a CAC vote. They now have that vote, so I'll go through a presentation about the case and what's being requested. So this is 2400 Gresham Lake Road. It's actually multiple properties. The entire site fronts on Gresham Lake Road, Nichols Road, and Litchford Road, and it's a little bit less than 16 acres. The request is to rezone from R4, residential 4, to R10 with conditions. Those conditions limit the density to essentially 5.1 units per acre. I mentioned the CAC vote, that was last week. The vote was four in favor, 32 against, and deadline for action is April. So in terms of the zoning, you can see immediately to the north, there's R6 zoning. To the other directions adjacent to the site, R4 zoning, a little bit more R6 to the south. In the vicinity, there's some RX3 zoning, both to the east and to the south, and a little bit to the north here, an R10 CU. That was the rezoning from a couple of years ago, some of you may remember, rezoned to R10, allowed townhouses and smaller lot, detached houses at eight units per acre. So in terms of what that looks like on the ground or from the aerial, you can see the site is largely vacant. There are a couple of houses on the parcels along Litchford. You've got some industrial uses along I-540, again, townhouses. A little bit to the east, detached houses on the properties adjacent to the rezoning site, some more residential apartment uses to the south. The site I mentioned that was rezoned, currently undeveloped, but that was rezoned to permit So a couple of views of the site itself. You can see, so that on the right, largely wooded, undeveloped. This is from Nichols Road looking south, and then Litchford Road looking north. So the conditions and the underlying here is reflecting that there were some changes to the conditions. If you looked at the staff report from two weeks ago, they had not submitted those conditions in time for that report, and so it changed the content of the report, and in one case, one of the consistency conclusions. So I mentioned the density, it's actually expressed in terms of total housing units for the area, so 80 total, which equates to 5.1 per acre. So since the initial filing, they added some additional conditions that improved consistency. One is to not allow the apartment building type, so that leaves townhouse, duplex, detached house. They also specified a 10-foot wide landscaped area adjacent to some adjacent parcels, and I'll show you a map that illustrates the locations of that in just a second. And then finally, specifying that beyond requirements for tree conservation and amenity area, an additional 10% of the site would be left as open space, tree conservation area, or some kind of amenity area. I mentioned the condition that had to do with the transition, so this shows with the yellow-orange lines, hopefully those are fairly visible, the parcels along which that's designated. So a comparison to the existing zoning, I hit the highlights there, so total number of units, of course, it's vacant right now, existing zoning would permit 62, rezoning to R10 CU, 80 units, so an additional 18 housing units, no office or retail. Setbacks are fairly similar, 10 to the front. The side setback for R10 is less, zero or six, but of course, the condition specifies a larger setback, that 10-foot transition to those adjacent parcels. So in terms of carbon emissions and affordability, so not well transit served in this location. It's roughly a mile from the nearest transit route, so low transit score, walk score is lower than the city average, so driving here is a little likelier than on average. Terms of the housing types, so townhouses are permitted, not necessarily what would be built, but on average, they are more energy efficient than detached houses. Terms of affordability, small modest increase to housing supply, no subsidized units, does allow, as I mentioned, housing types other than detached housing, does allow smaller lots than the citywide average, not within walking distance of transit. So future land use map designates this for low-density residential, and so the definition of that, a couple parts to it. It's up to six acres, so this is, six units per acre, so this is less than that. It also specifies that housing types other than detached houses or smaller lots are typically not appropriate. They are appropriate if there is some additional open space provided beyond what the code would require, so that 10%, when that was added to the conditions, that created consistency with that future land use map category. So no urban form guidance here, consistent with the comprehensive plan, now consistent with the future land use map, consistent with several policies along the lines of the issues that I've gone through, zoning for housing, housing variety. No inconsistent policies. Deadline for action, April 13th. I mentioned the CAC vote, the primary issue brought up during the CAC consideration was traffic impact from the development. There were some other comments, but that was, I think, the largest single subject. Happy to take questions if you'll have some.
So, I lost my train of thought, go ahead.
Well, traffic, so what about it? Just, there's a lot of it, or is it a specific complaint or concern?
Yeah, I think there's a feeling that during the peak hours, that it can be difficult to make some left turns in the area, that Litchford has a fair amount of traffic. That's a street that the city's plans call for widening in the future. Jason Myers may be able to talk a little bit more to the potential, there's no specified project for that yet, but that's something that the city recognizes does warrant improvement in the future. So I would let, I think there are some people here to speak on the case, they may be able to talk about their specific traffic-related concerns in more detail, but that was something that was fairly consistently brought up.
So for the CAC vote, did it, were the additional conditions part of the case at that point?
Yes.
Okay, so they voted on what we saw today?
That's right.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I have one other one. Is the additional open space offer is good, and there are defined buffers in two locations. Is there anything about tree buffering on Litchford and on Nichols?
So nothing specific as to where the locations of those tree conservation areas would be.
Any other questions for staff? All right, let's hear from the applicant.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Planning Commission members. My name is Beth Trejo. I'm here today on behalf of MI Homes. MI is the contract purchaser of this property, and they would like to develop it for 80 homes, as we've said. They are coming forward with an R10 conditional use request to allow some flexibility in the lot size and the setbacks. There are some challenges to the site as it does have frontage on three streets, which is a bit unusual. You know, they are planning on smaller lots, but at a density that is compatible with the area. You know, they have committed to additional open space. One of the, the trends they're seeing sort of is that folks do prefer to have open area that's outside of their lots. I guess maybe because they're a bit like in my family where we both work and we're not home all that often, and we'd prefer not to spend that time mowing. So we have had a, a series of community meetings starting last March. We had a meeting in March, a meeting in June, and one in October as well. And through the course of those discussions, we have made changes to the proposal. We added land area along Litchford Road, and that slightly decreased the density of the proposed project, you know, very minimally. We also changed the product type, and we added the conditions with the buffers as well as the open space area in an attempt to address the concerns of our, our neighbors that we heard and that are here today, and I'm sure will tell you in more detail, you know, what, what remains. But I would just point out, you know, what we're talking about here is the delta, essentially 1.1 units to the acre, about 18 additional homes. We feel like that's an efficient use of this land area that meets the comprehensive plan. And, you know, is a, certainly, you know, my client would be able to accommodate greater density, but we feel like this is something that's a bit in the middle and more compatible with the surrounding area. We would ask for the opportunity to address any comments or questions that were made in rebuttal, but we would thank you for your time this morning and ask for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Trejo. Any questions?
Well, Beth, I'll ask you.
Sure.
Is anyone, well, we'll hear, I guess, shortly what folks are asking for, but have they raised the question of the tree line along Litchford and along Nichols with you?
I don't specifically recall that. Like I said, we have had a number of meetings over, over time. I do know that as we go in to actually evaluate the site for tree conservation area, one of the first areas we're supposed to look at is the perimeter. I, I don't know whether that will ultimately qualify or not, but I, I point that out to you as something that exists in the city code.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, so we have seven minutes and 53 seconds for anybody who wants to come up and speak in support. Is there anybody who would like to come up and speak in support? All right, seeing none, we will ask people who are here to speak in opposition to come forward. You will have 10 minutes total, two minutes per person, so if you could please come down to the front and line up to talk, I'd appreciate it.
Greetings to the commission.
Please state your name and your address.
My name is Royster Moore. I live at 7612 Nichols Road, about 50 feet from the site. I haven't been here 20 years, or 30 years, or 40 years, or 50 years. I've been living here for 60-plus years. I, I would like to say that there are about five apartment complexes on Litchford Road. Atlantic Avenue funnels four lanes into a two-lane Litchford Road. There's a lot of traffic, a lot. They're lined up from one end to the other in the mornings and in the afternoon. I've seen a lot of changes. Change is good. We need the housing. We need the jobs. It's more tax dollars, more investment profit, more traffic, more noise, more pollution, more schools. The small lot sizes is what I'm concerned about. Five homes on 210 by 210, 5.3. That's, you don't have any what we used to call elbow room, no privacy, you know, even for the people that are going to live there. I would like to add one other thing. The displacement of small mammals and the death, yes, death, of reptiles.
Thank you, that's your time.
I yield back to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Commissioner, the rest of the commission. My name is Martin Leary. I am a, my wife and I, we reside at 2400, excuse me, Crowther's Court. We've been there since 2003. I will tell you that I am a resident of the best neighborhood in Raleigh, not because of the most expensive houses, but because of the neighbors that we have, not only in our area, but Royster and the other people that live along our community. I'm going to talk about, and I'm sorry I don't have a map or anything, but of the property within the boundaries of Litchford, Nichols, and Gresham Lake, there are basically 24 properties. Of the 24 properties, Nichols Landing represents 11 of those, and that's those who I'm speaking of. Of the remaining properties there, Royster and a couple of other gentlemen, they live along the other side of Nichols, so they're not within the boundary, but they look directly on to the property that's being developed. Royster, as he stated so eloquently, has been there for 60-plus years. We also have a neighbor that's been there for over 50 years, and unfortunately, we just had a neighbor pass that's been there for over 40 years, that was there for over 40 years as well. What I would like to talk to about and respectfully request the commission to consider in this is that the 32 to 4 vote was not against development. It was against rezoning. We embrace the development. We need the development. We are there. Our, our passion for not allowing the rezoning to happen is based upon the fact there's no justification to it. There's no public interest to go from 62 housing units to 80 housing units without an impact study on what it means to the neighbors. As it was so eloquently stated earlier, if you look around the property, it's all R4, R6, and slightly lesser density houses there. So there is no justification for an R10.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak?
Good morning. My name is Margarita Klein. I live at 7501 Nichols Road. I'm not allowed to restate what everybody else has stated.
We prefer not.
Focusing. I don't understand why rezoning would be necessary. If they're going to put five houses or four houses, let's just leave it at the four. Maybe the developer doesn't like meeting their neighbors when they're mowing their yard and doing their chores. We cherish that in our neighborhood. We don't want to live near strangers who are packed into their homes. Our neighborhood is all about getting to know each other. Our neighborhood is all about walking to the grocery, which gets harder and harder to do with the increasing traffic in the neighborhood. We have a great little shopping center. It's hard to get there anymore. There's not any shopping centers to our south. We have the one to the north and a one further, further up north, and with the increasing traffic, we can't even get to Harris Teeter. Now granted, I love the food line that's right there, but that's all we want to do, is maintain what we have in our neighborhood. R4 development fits into place with how we live and how we enjoy our neighbors in our neighborhood, and if we keep it R4, as we've all said, we welcome the development. We need the development, but we just need it to be better understood. Most, the other thing, the, the developer had said that these were going to be detached, single-family homes. Last Tuesday, they dropped it on us. These are townhomes. These are not detached, single-family homes. They also said they're acquiring three properties along Litchford Road. They never told us they were going to be knocking down our neighbors' homes. I mean, change like this, we want development, but we don't want our neighbors' homes bulldozed just for them to be able to increase the density in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak?
Good morning. My name's Jim Coleman. I'm a resident of 2404 Crowther's Court. I just wanted to give you a visual, if you can bear with me for a moment here. We have about 30-some people in this chambers right now, and imagine that this right here is Nichols Road. And imagine if 30-some people tried to come down here, Gresham, I'm sorry, to Litchford Road, and wanted to make a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn. This is typical every morning in our neighborhood, around 30-some people. Now, quadruple that. If you put 80 homes in with an average of two cars per home, and people trying to come out and block this road, it's going to be a mess. It's already quite a mess. On the way here this morning, leaving my neighborhood, a car blew through the stop sign, which is typical. People don't pay attention to that stop sign. So maybe putting in, you know, 80 homes will alleviate that problem because the traffic's going to be backed up so much that nobody will be able to get through anyway. So, anyway, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. So I believe that's four, four people. So we have room for one more person to come forward to speak. Is there anybody else who would like to speak about this case?
I thank you for the time to speak. I'm Sean Klein. I live with my wife, 7501 Nichols Road. Also understand that there has been traffic impact studies on this. They have not been redone since other rezoning has happened in that area. So I do not think the traffic studies are still valid. So traffic will increase significantly with the other rezoning that is currently happening. Also want to state that it's going from an R4 to a conditional use R10. It's quite a skip from going past an R6. R6 could have been done on this and housed 80 properties. Because of the challenges of the property, they went to a 10 with no areas, I think it's six feet per distance per residence between the homes, which means that on one acre, there's going to be much more than 5.1 on that acre itself. Total usage, yes, but in the one area, it is much higher, probably very close to the R10. That's all.
Thank you. We do have about a minute, but if anybody else wants to come forward to speak, we would take that comment.
The gentleman who was talking about the reptiles, he wanted to take a minute, and you stopped in mid-thought about reptiles.
Of course, you, you can tell that I'm an animal lover, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of forest in there. And that, that buffer, there was a developer who bought the property first. I don't know if they still own it or not. They were going to build 60,000, $600,000 homes there, which there was a phase two, that they've already been building homes across the street, which was part of that, that sale. The buffer zone was going to be 50 feet from the, right away of the roads, all the way around the property, which would have been great, but that's not going to happen now. But the small animals, the reptiles, turtles, there are salamanders. It's kind of a damp location. We have eagles, I'm sorry, we don't have eagles. We have hawks, and I, I just, I hate to see them displaced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I understand you, let me see if I understand you. There was a proposal, this is across the street from you?
Yes.
And there was supposed to be a 50-foot tree buffer on the other side of the street?
Well, around the existing, the property now. It was, now, this is between us, this is just hearsay, but I, I do have paperwork on it. I did not bring it. This was the original purchaser. It was sold by Julian Nichols. It was a Nichols farm. It was corn fields and, and it was in their family for many, 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 many years. That being said, their, the original developer, I have a plant that shows they were going to have a 50-foot tree buffer all around that existing property that's on that map. And there's been, across the street, Litchford Road, is it is a subdivision, and there's some nice, beautiful homes there. Northridge is a quarter of a mile down the street. They, they're million-dollar homes. No townhomes in that area. And also, Northridge Country Club, a lot of golfers, a lot of, you know, it's, it's a very nice neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you. To clarify, the, the plan with the 50-foot tree buffer, you said the average home price there was $600,000, to your recollection?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
If I, five seconds, just to add on to...
We would have to vote to give you additional time, so. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll move that we give this gentleman one minute.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hang on, anybody opposed to?
I see, I see that.
Hang on, anybody opposed? Okay, thank you.
Well, I actually have the plot land from the previous development here that I wanted to echo on this. It is case number S 32-14. I'd be willing to get, this is the only copy I have, but if you want to look at, it's, shows that the same property, minus the three additional pieces that are being acquired, shows a house plan for 32 houses on there with the buffers and everything. This is a type of an example that we, we recognize we have no say in this because this conforms to the R4 zoning. However, because they are going to an R10 zoning, you know, we feel that, you know, we're being, a burden is being placed upon us. So this type of development, we would, we would welcome, and you could see the develop, the, if you research it on yourself before you vote, that'd be great. Thank you.
If you want to pass that around, we'll, we'll send it back to you after we've had a chance to look at it. So moving on, we have two minutes for the applicant to rebut or respond to any of the comments.
Yes, Madam Chair, just very briefly, you know, in terms of the public benefit here, you know, what we're proposing is supported by the comprehensive plan. It is allowing for greater flexibility in terms of housing stock and, and additional housing, be it, you know, a small amount more than is currently permitted. In terms of, you know, it is a different style of development than the large lot sprawl we've typically had in North Raleigh, but it does provide 30% open space on this property. So, you know, in addition to the buffers that are being provided, almost a third of the site is being preserved in some form or fashion as open space or amenity area or tree conservation area that will be owned and maintained by a homeowners association, you know, to provide some, you know, some flexibility. We did try to address the concerns that we've heard. You know, we can't address the concern if we want it to stay the same, but we have tried to add conditions to address the comments that we heard, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
So the suggestion that there could be a buffer along Litchford Road, you bought three houses along...
We have them under contract. We don't own any of this.
They've been added to this case, so, and they're wooded now, right?
There are homes on those lots.
But there's a tree buffer along that, going by the picture we saw, I haven't been up there, so.
And Brandon Moore, our engineer, let's see, and maybe we can pull up the pictures.
Yeah, if we could get an aerial, that might help.
There we go.
There we go.
And I think...
So the three homes are...
The homes are, the additional three lots are here.
Okay, all right.
And I'm not sure when this aerial was taken, but the, the prior developer did some work on the site, so I believe that there's more area disturbed on this site than is shown here, but, but I'm not sure.
Okay, well, it might, it might help this case in the minds of the neighbors if you committed to some buffer along Litchford Road. Might not, I don't know, but.
Right.
It occurs to me that that... It occurs to me that that would soften the impact of the greater intensity on the interior of this site.
You know, and so I know that that's the first area we have to look for our tree conservation, and again, I don't know whether that will meet that criteria or not, but the city code does require that we look on the perimeter of the site first.
Right, but you could offer more than code requirement on the, on the boundary along Litchford.
Right. And I'm just not, I'm just not sure how that would work. What we have committed is that a third of the site would be, would be undeveloped.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, so seemingly, this could be done, seems to me it would be fairly easy to do, but I'm not sure, I'm not a developer.
Location is everything, isn't it? And so I, I don't know that that development would preclude that, but I don't know that we could provide that. We still have to go through the site planning subdivision process, you know, and, you know, because we have so much frontage on our site, you know, we may be required to provide, even if tree conservation isn't along Litchford, which it may be, it could be required along Gresham Lake or Nichols. And so we have all those areas to look out for, and it's sort of the game of Tetris, makes it difficult to, you know, make that, that formal commitment.
Thanks. Thank you.
I have a question. What would be, I know it's early in the development plan, but what would be the average price of these homes, or maybe a range?
Yeah, so, so is it difficult for us to say that specifically because, you know, so many factors? We don't have a sense of where we will be. But my recollection, Erica, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this, the homes that were, that MI Homes would like to build here, they previously built in Apex, and my recollection is that they sold in the high threes and low fours, is that correct? Yeah, so that's an indication of generally what the price point would be.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant right now? Mr. Myers, could we bring you forward to talk about the traffic in the area? It seems to be a big point of concern for the neighbors, and I don't know if there's any plan for changes in that area.
There aren't any programmed funded, or funding program for any specific projects very close to this site. Excuse me, I'll, I think Planning Commission's aware, and if not, I'll remind everybody that Old Lake Forest Road, right now, Litchford Road, I'm sorry, Atlantic, it was mentioned that Atlantic comes down to Litchford Road, and that's absolutely true, but at the same time, Old Lake Forest Road splits off at the point it becomes Litchford Road. The city is, it is 65% in design, is starting to procure right-of-way to widen Old Lake Forest Road. Not that that serves this, this part of the city, it's on the other side of the railroad tracks, but it is going to be adding some capacity on the other side. Is there a further zoomed-out map here, Jason? That I can, okay. I'll talk in abstract, I think folks are pretty familiar with the area. NCDOT has a program project to convert US-1 north of I-540 into a limited-access highway, and that will be able to do a lot potentially to remove some of the traffic that's on the more local streets, because there won't be a reason to take, you know, it'd be much faster, less congested, and without any stoplights, except for at the interchange for some movements. A part of that project that we can't know for sure will happen, but it is certainly in the city's interest and in the region feels it's in their interest, is to connect Gresham Lake Road, so I'm going to draw on here. Gresham Lake Road goes this direction, meets up with US-1 north of the interchange. Part of the city's plan and Campo's US-1 corridor study plan was to build an overpass of US-1 for Gresham Lake Road and connect it basically into the other side of Triangle Town Center. And so the city is working with NCDOT, or will be working with NCDOT when they restart work on, on the US-1 project to try to get that to happen. But how much NCDOT is willing to pay for as a part of the project, what they find to be in their interest compared to what's in our interest is something that we're, we're still trying to work through a little bit. What that would do is help, I think, make it a little bit easier to go in a more direct route to where people want to go to, without trying to find some path that isn't really designed for that. That's in a big, broad sense. More specifically, all of the frontage of the, of any subdivision in here would, would be built out to a street standard section, which includes Litchford Road being widened. Now, given the length of that, it may not be useful to widen to a four-lane divided for, I think about eight or nine hundred feet, but they would certainly be able to put in a right-turn lane into the, whatever neighborhood street they build, would certainly be building sidewalks, and would be building an internal street network that might make it shorter to walk down a neighborhood street towards the shopping center than to have to go around on the busier streets. One suggestion I might offer the applicant is, Nichols Road is, specifically about Nichols Road, this is not in the city's street plan, so it is a neighborhood street by default in our city's street plan, which is, to a standard, about thirty-six wa, thirty-six feet wide, back of curb to back of curb. At the intersection with Gresham Lake Road, there's no curb and gutter. A development of this property, you build it on a one side, but not necessarily have, it wouldn't have any change to the other side. The applicant could offer a condition that would, would offer a little bit more right-of-way dedication, a little bit more construction, to be able to build a left-turn lane at that location of, of some length that made sense, and that's really up to them to, to decide what that might be. That would help the situation that was mentioned of having Nichols Road be a difficult place to get out on Gresham Lake Road, because if somebody's turning left, it tends to take some time to do it safely, and everybody who wants to go straight or go right that's behind them ends up getting stuck. By putting in a left-turn lane there, they, they, that situation may be improved. It may be their site plan obligations would automatically yield that anyway, but I'm not, without actually doing an engineering design a little bit, it's hard to, hard to be certain of that. Did that answer the question? I didn't want to ramble too much, but there aren't program projects in this specific area other than development builds out its streets, but those are some of the context and factors.
Can you say what the timing of the US-1 changes would be?
Unfortunately, I can't.
Okay. Five years, ten years?
That project was, should have at this time been having public meetings towards having a documented preferred alternative and a environmental impact statement being published. NCDOT halted work on that, I think, six to maybe nine, six-ish months ago, and hasn't restarted that at this time. So it's at least six months late from something that would have been building it, I think, in the 2024 timeframe, but they were also looking to do design build. So that kind of introduces a little bit of uncertainty into when the actual construction would happen relative to the project starting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Myers while he's here?
May I address what Joe just said about the traffic issue?
Not unless we vote to allow more conversation, or if we have a question for you, so...
I like what he said, because he's actually wrong on one aspect.
Well, I'm interested in this discussion, so you're, you're here now, I don't know that you'll have a chance to return, so I would move that we give you a minute, not to belabor his point, but to make yours.
Do we have a second? Second? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed?
What he's talking about really is traffic coming from Gresham Lake Road off of Capitol Boulevard, and then turning on to Nichols Road. What our biggest concern, and that is a traffic jam, by the way, our biggest concern is actually on the other side of that. Nichols Road going on to Litchford Road. That is where we see the biggest amount of traffic tie-up. And by extending Gresham Lake Road over Capitol Boulevard and having more traffic funneling in, that's going to just add more and more traffic. So with traffic coming from the proposed eighty homes built on the undeveloped site right now, dumping cars onto Nichols Road, going in both directions, as I mentioned earlier, you're talking about adding quadruple the amount of traffic that is currently going through that area right now. Right? Thank you.
Jason, do you, excuse me, Madam Chair, question for...
Yes, please.
Jason, do you know what, first of all, do you agree with, are you, are you talking about a left turn off of Gresham Lake?
I was talking about a left...
I thought you were talking about Nichols onto Gresham Lake.
I was, and I apologize, I did misunderstand. I thought the discussion was about this intersection, and it was about this intersection, so that was a mistake I made. So what I was talking about was the potential to have the applicant commit to making sure there was a left-turn lane here, because they have the ability to do that. They do not have the ability to do anything at Litchford and Nichols, it is very much off-site, and there may be enough right-of-way to squeeze something in, in which case they could commit to do something, but they're not going to be in a position to purchase or condemn right-of-way from a neighboring property owner. I understand what the, what the app, or what the gentleman said, and not going to refute that directly, because I don't necessarily disagree, but one thing I would say is that if this site develops NCDOT as a subdivision, it's going to have a street network that very roughly is going to look something like this. So you're going to have access to Nichols, Gresham, and Litchford, based on all those new streets. So people are, within this development, are going to be able to take whichever route is most direct and works best for them, and that's going to help spread around the traffic a little bit. It won't be funneling it to Nichols, and it may end up, may, end up reducing some of that traffic, though in all likelihood, it just won't affect it directly. There won't be a lot of people wanting to turn left to go out to Nichols if that's congested, because they may find it easier to go Gresham Lake and take a left at the light, or to take a left at the, at the other street that would tie into, to Litchford. So think about what the changes of the network of developing this would be, it's going to add some street grid. That's somewhat independent of what the zoning actually is, though the block perimeter standards get to be tighter as the lot size goes smaller, and when we go to an R10, which requires streets that may not otherwise have been required.
So, do you still think that the left-turn lane that you suggested is a useful addition as potential condition?
I think it may be, and I'm making that suggestion based on the citizen's comment, which was, I was partly misinterpreting, not looking at actual operational traffic counts or any, any information about that intersection. So it's not an engineering recommendation as it is a suggestion to align a piece of input with something the applicant could do.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments for the applicant or staff at this point?
I do, for the applicant. So the commitment is no more than eighty housing units, is that correct?
Yes.
And then, an additional 10% of open space is committed. I think that there's some validity to the traffic concerns, but I just wanted to point out for everyone that if there is any hesitancy of going from an R4 to an R10, if we would be okay with an R6, the point here is that there's, they're committing to no more than eighty units, and it's a 15.58 acre site, which results into 5.13 units per acre. So the commitment is already less than the R6 designation, so I just wanted to make that point, so it would not go to an R10 density. But I think with some of the additional concerns regarding traffic, might be fair, and so I think, just from my perspective and how it would go through the normal process, but to work with some of the residents that are concerned about that. But I think that the focus should alleviate some concern if they understood that it's only 5.13 units per acre. It's not an extreme change.
Right, it's about eighteen units is, you know, is the difference. Now, you know, aside from density, there are other requirements in the zoning code that dictate the district that we chose. You know, we're looking for flexibility in terms of lot size and setbacks and that kind of thing, which is why we chose the R10 district. R6 and R10 are pretty different in that regard. You know, if there was an R8, that might have been a choice we would make, but there wasn't. So, so that's why we chose the R10, but limited the overall density.
All right, let's bring it back to the table. What's your pleasure? Do you have other thoughts or comments you'd like to make at this time? Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Thank you. Thank you. I will. We have until April to decide this case. I agree with Jennifer, I'm not concerned with the density per se. I do think that, that there are some site and traffic issues that might benefit from a discussion between the applicant and the neighbors over the next two weeks. So I would suggest that we hold the case for two weeks to see what occurs from that conversation.
Is the applicant willing to, to accept the two-week tabling of this, to have more conversation with the neighbors about the traffic and, and the additional unit concerns?
You know, we will follow along with your recommendation. I would just point out that we've had three neighborhood meetings and two CAC meetings, you know, and...
Last CAC, excuse me, last CAC meeting did not go well.
It, it did not. I would say, you know, so our, our first neighborhood meeting was very well-attended, and attendance sort of dropped off. So you're right, even though we were, you know, reaching out, we weren't getting a lot of input. But, you know, we offered again this morning as well, and at our last meeting in October, we, you know, specifically offered to come to Nichols Landing and meet with folks directly. You know, call us, we will come to your neighborhood. We did come out and meet with one gentleman who had a specific concern, but we did ask representatives of the neighborhood to please meet with us prior. You know, timeline is something that is a concern to us. We will do what you want us to, but we want you to know that we have made significant efforts to reach out to the community.
I'm, I'm in favor of, of this proposal to defer. I think we've had a similar case recently, that the neighborhood was considerably against a development of certain density. And I would also encourage the CAC to be open and collaborative with a developer to, if there is opportunity to provide, you know, a different traffic, you know, if there's some sort of condition that can go with that, this is a mutual, both-way situation, so, you know, you can get a lot of fuel when you have a lot of people then that have a certain thought process, but again, this is only 5.13 units per acre. So it needs to be a collaborative experience, so I would just offer that if we are going to defer this for another two weeks to allow for a CAC discussion, I would expect all parties to be open, so it's kind of a thought.
Just, just to clarify, I don't think there'll be time for another CAC conversation because of the meeting schedule, but there is an opportunity...
They can call for a special meeting if they...
There is that, the CAC could offer a special meeting, but I would suggest that the neighbors have a special meeting. Doesn't necessarily have to be guided by the CAC. So are the neighbors willing to have further conversation with the applicant? And, you know, I just want a yes or no.
We are always open to discussion. However, as Beth, you know, so eloquently stated, we've had three, or they sponsored three meetings that was attended. Each one of those meetings, we've asked for specific information, such as what's the development going to look like? We haven't received any feedback at all.
Right.
To the gentleman who asked to defer this, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, I think we should take a vote today. The vote is whether or not, you know, the commission is going to stand with the neighbors who want development, but just don't want to have the additional impact to it, or if we're going to side with the developer to go ahead and push something on to the neighborhood without any, that's putting an additional burden on to us. I'm not trying to be hostile here, but this is something that has been going on, going on since March of last year, and, you know, I think we need to go ahead and move forward for the benefit of all parties. Thank you.
I take your point. So what are your thoughts?
I think, fair enough. I think from my standpoint, I'm still not prepared to vote today, but I do think that there is an impact on traffic and how this might be from a city's perspective on how we might be able to manage this, so I think that the applicant should still look at traffic from some of the recommendations from staff. So that would be my suggestion.
Any other thoughts about the handling of this case, from anybody else on the commission?
So my thought in response to the gentleman is, my thought in response to the gentleman is that you're asking some questions about how the project would look, and I think those are appropriate questions to ask, and you have two more weeks if this, if my motion obtains, to see if you can get some answers to those questions. I'm trying to help you get some answers to those questions.
I know you are, but these are the same questions that we've asked.
And, and this, and we can't ask for a site plan for the zoning case, that is a separate process. I just want to get that on the table. So we can't force them to produce a site plan in order to decide about the zoning case. So what I'm hearing up here is that there seems to be, at least of the people who are speaking, a preference to hold for two weeks and give the opportunity for some conversation, but definitely for the applicant to consider perhaps some of the traffic suggestions that Mr. Myers made specifically. I think there was a suggestion for that left-turn lane that may not address exactly what the neighbors were asking about, but might help with some of the issue of traffic in the area. So are you willing to go off and consider the traffic, the change of traffic condition?
We will absolutely engage...
We will absolutely engage with the city. This is the first time this comment has been made in this process, so we were a bit surprised to find it, but, of course.
Sure. Okay. So given that, and given there seems to be a preference, and the applicant is willing to hold for two weeks, we don't need to vote, so we're going to table this one for two weeks and give you guys an opportunity to have more conversation with the neighbors if you think that it'll move the needle at all. If you have anything that's site plan-like, you might be able to share that with them. But I know that we can't ask you for that, but they are asking you for that, so...
Right. And we don't have a specific development plan, but we're happy to sit down and talk.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, everybody, for coming out today and expressing your concern. So we'll table this for two weeks. We'll pick it up, well, not two weeks, we'll pick it up at the February 11th, which I don't think is exactly two weeks, is it? Okay, so February 11th meeting. All right. Moving on to new business. And I think there's some folks that might have come in late, that may not know that we've deferred some cases, but we only have one item left on the agenda, and that is TC 1719 Design Alternatives.
Let me get us to where we need to be. TC 1719 is a text change that would, for design alternates, this would replace the option for a design adjustment from the provisions of the UDO, Articles 8.4 and 8.5. It would create more objectively-applied criteria at the staff level and provide a path for the quasi-judicial hearing for the request that cannot be approved administratively. The purpose of this is to reduce items that would be required to go before a public hearing, and it would make these changes would be necessary to achieve compliance with state law. This ordinance is a follow-up to two previous text changes that you've reviewed, and that would be TC 219 and TC 619. Now, those standards were, those text changes were to address the standards associated with design adjustments. These changes were necessary to remove the subjective standards that were formerly in the code, and remove those from the administrative review process. Specifically, TC 219 removed the ability for the administrative design adjustments, and instead required an applicant to go to the Board of Adjustment to seek relief for any design adjustment. TC 619 modified the standards in Article 8-3 to be more objective, and it also gave the appeal path to the Board of Adjustment. The major modifications that are being proposed with this text change would be, the process would be re-titled to Design Alternate, which is currently Design Adjustment. It would make the quasi-judicial public hearing with this body, the Planning Commission, and remove it from the Board of Adjustment. And the language for the streetscape plans would be enhanced. TC, excuse me, Section 8.36 would remove the findings and relocate them to 10.218. Section 8.41, which describes the regulations for construction and acceptance of streets and streetscapes, would be revised. 8.41B would identify those standards, which standards are required within the downtown area, and it would identify an option for a payment in lieu of installation. It would also provide an allowance for public access easements for sidewalks that encroach upon private property. Section D, or excuse me, 4.1D would establish location priority for street trees on streets controlled by the North Carolina DOT or the city, and it would describe or allow for street trees placed on private property. 8.41E would expand upon the seminal requirements for streetscape plans. 8.51B would give Design Alternate Review, Street Cross-Sections, to the Planning Commission. 8.54B would establish a one-foot width increase in a two-lane divided avenue. 8.58 would give a dimensional allowance to streetscape, to the streetscape for approved stormwater improvements. 10.12C would give specific approval authority of design alternates to the Planning Commission. Section 10.18A would restate the specific approval authority for design alternates to sections, or excuse me, to Articles 8.3, 8.4, and 8.5 of the UDO, plus design alternates to standards within the Raleigh Street Design Manual. Again, that's to the Planning Commission. Section 10.18B would identify the application requirements. 10.18C would identify the Planning Commission action. 10.18D would identify the findings for approval by the Planning Commission of a design alternate from sections 8.32, 8.34, and 8.35 relating to blocks and access. Section 10.18E would identify the findings for approval by the Planning Commission for a design alternate from Articles 8.4 and 8.5, or from the Raleigh Street Design Manual. So a lot of things coming your way. Staff is available for any questions that you have.
Any questions for staff at this time?
When is the deadline for action on this? The deadline for action on this case?
It's April the 27th.
Okay.
So, oh, go ahead.
When is our next text change committee?
That's the question I was just going to ask. So would folks have a preference to go over this in more detail at the text change committee?
Yeah.
All right. So without objection, I'm going to go ahead and refer this to the text change committee. So the next text change committee is the 18th of February, is that right?
That's what it says here.
Oh, there you go. So we will take this up in text change on February 18th. Just a note, I'll be out for a medical procedure that day, so we'll need to confirm that all the other members can be there, so you have quorum.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to the draft of the January 14th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Does anyone have anything that they would like to see updated in those meeting minutes? All right. So all, somebody needs to make a motion to approve, sorry.
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. A report from the chair. Last time, we were in such a rush to get out of here at 1:00, we didn't have an opportunity for our new member, Blanny Mills, to tell us about herself, so I will yield my time as my chair report, to give you an opportunity to tell us about yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me, my name is Blanny Miller. I am a resident here in Raleigh, near Five Points. I've lived near and around the triangle my entire life. I previously worked at the statewide level on community and economic development planning and policies, and I'm an attorney, recovering attorney, then now work at a local Mediterranean food company called Neomond, as their new president, and I look forward to working on the commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have assigned you to text change committee and to transportation committee, so if you want to make a note of that. And our website, last I looked over the weekend, is still not up to date. We still have people who don't sit on the commission anymore listed, and our committees are all incorrect.
We'll make sure we get that fixed. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. So any report from the members?
Go ahead.
You going to talk about Raleigh Unleashed? Go ahead.
I'm going to let Bob speak to it, but just wanted to say, quite a few of us participated in Raleigh Unleashed last Saturday, and it was a really wonderful event, I think very useful. Some of the topics that came up today were discussed there. One of them was digital communication, so I think that's on the minds of lots of folks.
Well, yes, I enjoyed myself all day. We did talk about affordable housing in one session, I did, and then there were actually several sessions on that topic, so it's obviously front of mind for many of the commissions, not just this one. One idea that struck me as interesting was that the commissions don't talk to each other very much, so we don't know what the stormwater advisory, the stormwater management advisory commission might recommend to us, nor they, us to them. Similarly, other commissions that relate to planning. So there was some discussion of having a quarterly, I think, meeting of one member of all of the commissions to exchange information about what we're up to and what our questions and dilemmas are, and that, I think, was a good idea. Anyway, it was a good, a good day.
So how could we proceed on something like that? Could that be Planning Commission initiated, to suggest that we have a regular meeting of members from the different commissions, or is that something that could be done?
It's possible, it could be done. It sounds like it's a much larger effort than the Planning Commission.
That's what I'm thinking, yes.
Maybe this is a good topic for other members in different departments across the city and the city manager's office to have a conversation about how we can continue that type of discussion.
Okay. So is that something you can report back to us on?
Sure.
Okay.
And at the end of that meeting as well, the city council said they were going to take up these recommendations at their upcoming retreat and come up with some action items, hopefully for the city as well.
Was that one of the items, was the cross-commission? Okay, very good.
Do we have a date for our retreat?
Not yet, no.
We need to set that up. And I think last time you said, everybody start thinking about some dates that would work.
Right.
So last year, we did it in February...
You did it on February 15th last year.
Yeah.
Right.
I have your Jennifer, whatever.
Yeah, thank you. So if folks could look at the last couple of Fridays in February, everybody, including staff, to see if that's a possibility.
Sure.
That would be, I think, a good timing, if that works for folks.
And I can send out an email soliciting your input.
This would be an all-day Friday event, and would be Saturday and Sunday as well?
No, it's usually just a half a day on a Friday.
Half a day on Friday, okay. And then, if I could, regarding the traffic committee, do we want to set up a time, like who's on that, and can we do that now?
Bob is the chair of the traffic committee, and we can do that outside of the meeting, so I'll let him work that out.
The other members are, remind me?
Hang on. Since we don't have it online, yes, I know.
Changing personnel.
Yes.
Blanny has, Blanny and I...
Give me a second. So Bob, Michelle, Blanny, Shelley, and Jennifer, so it's those five.
All right. Can we put our heads together after this meeting and talk about when we can meet?
Okay.
Jason's, well, I'll have to check with Jason, he's our staff on this end, Bynum too, I think, right?
So do I need to send you the spreadsheet again?
No, we haven't. There were issues with the website, so you might have seen that the website looks a lot different. It's because it was recently updated, and I believe the issue that we were having on the Planning Commission page was not unique to the Planning Commission page, that when data was migrated, there was an older version of data that was grabbed and brought over, and there was not review that happened on the back end. So we're continually making changes and updating the sites, so I'll make sure that our IT folks get the correct information.
I wanted to bring up one other subject, now that I look at my notes from Raleigh Unleashed. Ken Bowers, the planning director, made a really good presentation about demographics and development trends in the city. And one statistic in that report was that our vehicle miles traveled per capita, I believe, continues to be bad compared even to Atlanta and other cities, and is getting worse. It's up over 30 miles per day, right? Used to be 27. So it seems to me that policy, it seems to me we ought to be trying to reverse that trend and bring vehicle miles traveled down, rather than have it continue to go up. And if the Transportation Committee is going to get busy, it might get busy thinking about how to do that.
Okay. All right. I think we're up to the report from the planning director.
Thank you. So at the last meeting, the city council scheduled three items for public hearing on February 4th. The Raven Ridge Plan Development rezoning, the Norcrest Street rezoning Z-4219, and the Davy Harrington Martin and West Street rezoning Z-619. So those three will be heard the evening of February 4th. For the February 18th daytime meeting, two items were scheduled for public hearing, Z-4319 Leesville Road, and the Rock Quarry Road changed to zoning conditions, which is known as TCZ-519. And then finally, two items to be scheduled for public hearing on March 3rd, that's an evening meeting beginning at 7:00, Z-3719, known as Zero Page Road, and the Willow Run NCOD, Z-4619. We also received some additional authorization for text changes at the last council meeting, one of which was related to a recent zoning case about mobile homes and private streets. So that was authorized, and staff was asked to work on that. And then finally, there is a call for a Planning Commission member to serve on the environmental advisory board's award jury. So that will occur on February 7th, from 9:00 in the morning until 12:00 noon. They will be serving you with food, coffee and food, to bribe you to attend. So what I will do is send out a call for interest and ask for a volunteer to respond.
Right. Thank you. So did you have something to add?
No, not to that.
All right. So we, looking at pending items, our next meeting of the committee is the 11th of February. We will have a committee of the whole meeting on February 27th, thanks to a case we referred there today, and we will also have a text change committee meeting on the 18th, thanks to another item that we referred to that. And the strategic planning committee meeting is on February 20th, as was discussed earlier, and there are items for that discussion. And it sounds like the traffic committee is about to get revved up to discuss some things that we, that Bob was just talking about.
Transportation committee.
Yes.
Not just traffic, not only traffic, but traffic too.
And I said revved up. You're revved up.
Revved up.
Yes. All right. Anything further that we want to discuss before we adjourn?
I have one thing. I don't have a report on the agenda, but I wanted to introduce you guys to David York. I'm sure you probably already know him, most of you. He's with our office now. He's working with us for about two weeks or so, and we are very glad to have him. There's a lot going on. And so we're going to kind of split up some of the planning and development-related legal issues, and so David's going to start transitioning to sit with you guys at the Planning Commission. Probably by at least March, maybe, you'll see him here in February too. We haven't really got it all the way worked out. But, so David might be here the next meeting, but you'll start seeing him. If you don't know him, he's here if you guys want to introduce yourselves.
All right. Thank you so much, and welcome, and congratulations. All right. Anything further? We adjourn.